Okay. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the School District of Waukesha, the full Board of Education, meeting on July 7th, 2021. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart, Cory Montiel, Greg Dietz,
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
Karen Reinichek.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here. Both Bill and Cory are excused, Sue. Will you also verify that the meeting's been properly posted, Sue?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'd like to just start off the night, I hope everyone had a wonderful 4th of July celebration, a time to really reflect on how grateful we ought to be that we live in this great country. And I'd like to just share one quote with you. Where liberty dwells, there is my country. Guesses on who? Benjamin Franklin, one of the founding fathers. Tonight, we do not have bright lights or recognitions, some formal recognitions, and we do not have student representatives to give reports on the high schools. Hopefully, they're enjoying their summer, maybe even earning a few dollars working. So we'll move right into the time where citizens address the board. As has been past practice, each individual will be limited to three minutes of time to speak. At the two-and-a-half-minute mark, Amanda will give you a signal, and if you could wrap things up in the next 30 seconds, we would appreciate it. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your phones. I haven't done that yet. I'm glad I reminded myself. And we do have 12 speakers signed up this evening. And we're going to start with Ellie McHenry, followed by Tom Nitske. Ellie, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Ellie McHenry. My address is South 53 West 23733 Big Ben Road, and I am a retired teacher from the school district. I'm here to discuss curriculum. Curriculum is developed at the administrative level, not in the classroom. A group of educators, administrators, and specialists meet together as a group multiple times over the year to change or adapt new curriculum for the district. The curriculum they develop together is presented to the Teaching and Learning Committee for review and discussion. Once that committee has approved it, it goes to the full board for review and discussion. The next month, it is brought to the board as an action item for approval. Anywhere along the way in this process, the plan can be adapted, changed, or tabled. After board approval, the curriculum is given to the staff for implementation. The staff does not choose it, write it, or get to vote on it. They just implement it. Curriculum development is a long, involved process. It typically occurs during the school year with a final vote taken in the spring so that it can be implemented the following school year. Right now, most teachers are gathering materials, buying books, researching, and writing lesson plans for the upcoming school year. The professional development days for this year are already planned, and the staff has signed up for the sessions they are interested in. New hires to the district have workdays set up to familiarize them with the district curriculum. Many, if not most, of those workdays revolve around how to present the curriculum in the classrooms. Before any action is taken on the curriculum, I would suggest, or ask, you all to take the time to familiarize yourselves with what this curriculum actually is. It is not CRT. It is culturally responsive teaching practices. Get a copy of the curriculum. Sit in on some of the new teacher classes, or attend the professional development classes for current staff. Visit some classrooms in the first few weeks of school and see what this looks like there. Then decide what action you want to take. Please respect the time and effort that so many people have put into this culturally responsive curriculum. Honor that effort by following the process and asking for changes in a timeframe that makes sense. During the summer, just before school starts, is not the time to make curriculum changes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ellie. And thank you for reminding me, Ellie, of not only mentioning your name, but your address. So if everyone could state their address, too, I would appreciate it. Tom, followed by Ben Menzel. Welcome, Tom.
Hello. How's everyone tonight?
Thank you.
Last night, I attended the Teaching and Learning Committee meeting. I found it quite interesting. And during that meeting, you guys discussed the equity plan that you would like to implement. That plan included using Dr. Shiroki Hali as guidance for the School District of Waukesha. Well, I watched that video today, and personally, I found it kind of troubling. I found some critical race theory, some political bias, and he even said that he thinks families are superficial. Well, I think this is a wrong direction for the community of Waukesha. I asked the school board to postpone any votes on any equity plan for the School District of Waukesha until the community and the rest of the board members have time to go over this material. I have a flyer available for anybody that wants it, so they can view this video. It contains a link to the video. It's on YouTube. So I hope that you, yeah, make the right decision for the community of Waukesha and our children, because they're everything to us. They're everything to our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Ben, followed by Amy Menzel. Hi, Ben.
Hi, good evening. Ben Menzel, 3938 Rivers Crossing Drive. My son's going to be a freshman at West High School this fall. He and his friends have conversations about things that are taking place in school, in our community, in America, and around the world. Those conversations include racism, systemic racism, police brutality, discrimination, and many other things. These conversations are not anti-American. They are a part of being an American. We cannot pretend these things don't exist or erase them from our history. Yes, these can be difficult conversations, because these are difficult topics. Kids need to have safe environments to have these conversations. To not provide them an opportunity to learn, to discuss, to critically think, to research and explore, to question, would be a complete failure. Our teachers need to be provided the tools so they can help our students with these conversations. And yes, some of our students may have a reaction to what they learn about these difficult topics. Their reactions need to be okay, even if we're uncomfortable ourselves. Maybe we need to learn more about these things ourselves and get comfortable with being uncomfortable. Learning about these issues is part of culturally responsive teaching, which is part of our curriculum today. Culturally responsive teaching is not critical race theory. And if anything, culturally responsive teaching needs to be expanded in our schools. So too does our work around equity. That work is just getting started. I've heard this board talk a number of times about the achievement gap that exists in schools. We do not have an achievement gap. We have an opportunity gap that results in achievement disparities. It is not until we work on solving the opportunity gap that any achievement disparities can be improved. And in order to do that, our district needs to continue its equity work. Looking at ways to reallocate funding or removing certain members of the district equity leadership team because you think they are too, excuse me, too radical, is not going to solve our equity problem. Taking those steps would only perpetuate it. Doing the hard work, listening to our community, listening to our non-white district community, our impoverished district community, are mere first steps in working on our equity problem.
30 seconds.
And closing our opportunity gap. Giving our district's Director of Equity a speaking role at this very table is another important first step. Instead of putting up roadblocks, I hope this board instead embraces this work and engages in it. Thank you.
Amy, followed by Jay McDivitt? Hi, Amy.
Good evening. Amy Menzel, 3938 Rivers Crossing Drive. Last fall, a student of mine, a Waukesha West student, said, "Honestly, I've learned more about Black history from Instagram and the show Blackish than I have from school." Her peers agreed. I immediately grabbed a Post-it note and jotted that down. That note sat on my desk as a reminder of a few things. One, that we can do better. Of course, we can, and we need to. In our equity efforts at Waukesha West, we often remind each other of something Maya Angelou said. She said, "Do the best you can until you know better. Then, when you know better, do better." This student feedback puts us in the know, and we need to do better. It also reminds us that students are learning all the time, as we all should be. What's most disheartening about recent conversations regarding equity is how often and easily students are undermined in these discussions. Do we really think if we don't talk about racism or inequity in the classroom, that students won't hear about it, or talk about it, or experience it? Folks, we have intelligent, inquisitive, thoughtful, and compassionate kids. They are curious about what's going on in the world and eager to try and understand it. They deserve the opportunity to do so. They have the right to ask questions and to grapple with complexities, and they are more than capable of doing so. This district, this board, needs to support all efforts towards building a more equitable society. Failure to do so not only fails our students, but perpetuates a systemic racism that some claim does not exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Jay, followed by Stacy Keen. Hi, Jay.
My name is Jay McDivitt. I have two children who attend the Waukesha Public School District, and we live at 215 South Charles Street. This past Sunday, we celebrated a document written by Thomas Jefferson. It is one of the most beautiful and brilliant documents in the history of Western civilization. Jefferson was a brilliant man. He was also a slaveholder. In short, he wasn't perfect. My firstborn is amazing. She also drives me insane. She makes real mistakes that have real consequences. In short, she isn't perfect. What is true for Jefferson and for my daughter is also true of the country I call home and that I love. So much to be proud of, and so many mistakes to learn from, which is why telling the whole story of our country and its people is good for our kids. I want my daughter to know that when she messes up, she will be held accountable. But she doesn't have to be perfect in order to be worthy of celebration. She is better than her worst mistakes. If we can't tell Jefferson's whole story, then he's simply a perfect hero who wrote one of our most beautiful founding documents. But if he is the brilliant founding father who also kept slaves, who wrote of liberty and justice while also disenfranchising women and keeping human beings in bondage, then he is a full and complex human being, just like my daughter. The same is true of the country that Jefferson worked to build, a land of liberty and opportunity, and a country built by enslaved people on stolen indigenous land, a country of great possibility, and yes, unequal privilege. Controlling what our teachers teach will not change the truth about our past, present, or possible futures as a country. Allowing them to tell the whole story, warts and all, will cultivate the vital values of curiosity, accountability, and empathy. Teaching kids half-truths will only set us all up for failure, and will hamstring our ability as a country to form a more perfect union, building on our beautiful but broken past.
30 seconds.
In order to become better than we have been before. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Stacy, followed by Mike Walsh. Welcome, Stacy.
Hi, Stacy Keen. I live in Waukesha. Again, I think I'm going to scrap what I wrote, but I am going to start with a definition of what critical race theory is, which is also cultural responsive teaching. Critical race theory is an ideology which started in academia in the '70s that says racism exists everywhere and every person and system, and the job of the critical theorist is to assess how, not if, racism occurred in any circumstance. If you are looking for racism in everything, you will find it. The most innocent thing will be a symbol of racism. This is cultural responsive teaching and CRT. A couple of things I do want to touch on. Ms. Roddy, I'm so disappointed last night that you didn't speak up about what you have learned in these equity meetings. You kept quiet, and you're the one board member who has been involved. Why aren't you speaking up about what was learned? Just learned from our union president, Ms. McHenry, that in fact, this is a curriculum that is being worked on. That was not mentioned last night. So what I want to talk about, I agree with these speakers that we need to speak to our students, and about all of it, the good, the bad, and the ugly, which I have said in this room before. What I don't want is teachers indoctrinating my children, their children. And it happens. We do not need political activism in our classrooms. We have teachers refusing to stand for the pledge, and at least one teacher at a middle school last year refused, changed the words to the Pledge of Allegiance. Instead of "justice for all," she would say every day, "justice for some." Now, that's political activism in our classrooms, and that should not be allowed. Matter of fact, our policy states it shouldn't. So how are you policing this indoctrination? Do we put cameras in the classroom? Because you can't be there. Last night, Ms. Landish was asked if Holly's teachings were being taught in the classrooms, and she said, "No." Have we already forgotten about the English teacher at West and North that had his documents with his website on it for the students? There has to be more. If we found her, there has to be more. Again, do we put cameras in the classrooms to ensure we're providing a completely inclusive environment for gay, straight, white students, and students of color?
30 seconds.
I'm going to end with this again, because if we truly want to be inclusive and include all views, which I think we should, why, again, I said it last night, do we not have a single book in our libraries about or by Candace Owens, Larry Elder, Thomas Sowell, or Herman Cain? These are highly successful Black conservatives, and they have a lot to say about helping Black children. Instead, we have books about Cardi B, white privilege, white fragility, intersectionality, defunding the police, and books about BLM.
Thank you, Stacy.
That's where our priorities appear to lie.
Mike, followed by Mitzi Kittle. Hi, Mike.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mike Walsh, 2412 Kestrel Lane. I'd just like to start, make sure everybody understands that the road to hell is paved with good intentions. Okay? So I believe that we can actually create the diverse and equitable situation that you guys actually, or many of the teachers have come forward and said we need to do. I'm going to help you outline how it should actually happen, if we're going to do it. Okay? And if you guys do it, I could be on board. So diversity, we keep talking about, and I know even our DPI leader at the state wants students and teachers to look similar. Okay? So if one-third, one-third of our students are people of color, then that means one-third of the teachers should be people of color. So that means one-third of the teachers, or whatever percentage we have that are not, need to go. Get them out. We need to bring in teachers that look like the students. That's what they're asking for. Do they know they're asking for that? And so then our union leader, if she's here, she probably can help us through with that. The next one is equity. Equity is not equality, correct? Equity is equal outcome. So how do you get an equal outcome? From the janitor to the principal, they're all in the building for one goal, right? That's the children. If the children are the goal, regardless of how they look, there's only one way to take care of this. Everybody that works in the building will be paid exactly the same. It's budget neutral. Okay? You have what they make now. Some people are going to lose some money, but the people at the bottom are going to make more. Right? So you're going to say, "This is crazy. This is crazy." But this is equity. This is what equity is. It's equal outcome. But then some are going to say, "Hey, wait a minute. I got a master's degree. I've worked harder." No kidding. Is that how this works? Is that how equality works? Right? Or equity? They want equity for the students. By the way, these are the same people asking for it that have apparently failed at creating it. And so those might be the first ones to go. Just kind of saying. Right? So let's put equality or equity. Each kid should have the equal opportunity to success. That's true. But we want to now put in equality. So again, they want equality? Pay them equally, from the principal to the janitor. It's 100% equal, and that really, when they all of a sudden say, "Whoa, whoa, that don't work for me," proves that it's just words. Right? It's just what we want to do to get people on our side.
30 seconds.
So we can look good out on social media. And speaking of social media, I want to give the people, whether I agree with them or not, when they're speaking tonight, or they come here and they speak, give them props for showing up. Right? Being in front of the TV, putting their face out there and their voice out there with the ideas, whether some people think they're crazy or not, instead of yelling at people on social media, "That is just crazy." And they hide behind fake, you know, fake personas on there. So props to everybody that comes here, especially the kids. I mean, even though it's some of the kids, I've got to tell you, I don't agree with one thing they say. Give them props for coming here, and they are professionals.
Thank you, Mike. Mitzi, followed by Laurel Peterson. Hi, Mitzi.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mitzi Kittle. I live at 134 Garfield Avenue, Waukesha. Our classrooms are increasing in diversity. Culturally responsive teaching, that CRT, is a research-based approach that connects students, their languages, and life experiences with what they learn in school. Neuroscience tells us that our brains are wired to make connections, and we remember information with what we have a hook to hang it on. That hook is background information, and that's what students bring to the classroom each and every day. But for students of color and other underserved groups, those assets are often overlooked. Teachers implement CRT by making learning contextual, showing students how they can apply the knowledge they've gained to their everyday lives. Traditionally, this has not been the practice, and we have relied on predominantly Eurocentric cultural references, which also appear in the SAT concepts and vocabulary. Lower SAT scores for underserved students have been linked to this very issue. Using diverse texts and curricula widens everyone's perspective. Particularly, it promotes self-esteem, engagement, and achievement in underserved groups. A focus on relationship building is crucial, knowing students and being aware of personal biases. I am also advocating for the reposting of the equity statements on the district's website. How proud should we be to say we provide all students with the necessary tools and access to learning opportunities, supporting them to reach their full potential? Community of color have been speaking for generations about their lived experiences in the context of race, inequality, and inequity, and it has affected their educational opportunity, housing, loans, policing, health, and wealth. And yet, an overwhelming majority of white Americans do not believe what they're being told, because it is so foreign from their lived experiences. You also hear people say.
30 seconds.
If you've only worked hard enough, you wouldn't be in that situation. When you actually expand your social circles and study many of these subjects, you understand this is the reality. Your legal counsel made it clear you may have campaigned on certain beliefs, but once elected, you have responsibility for all students. Please take time to learn, even in these subject areas that are uncomfortable.
Thank you, Mitzi. Thank you, Mitzi.
Students affected are their futures.
Laurel, followed by Amanda Schuman.
Laurel Peterson, 315 Northwest Avenue. I'm speaking to you all tonight about the need to further embrace diversity and pursue equity in our school district. First, I would like to remind everyone that last week, Dr. Seibert stated unequivocally that critical race theory is not taught in the School District of Waukesha. Although it could be argued that certain aspects of this divisive topic may creep into individual beliefs or actions within the district, this is an extension of personal fears and politics, not something that is encompassing the whole of the district. I heard speakers last night argue that teachers aren't being able to instruct students on basic subjects, and instead are creating division among our children by spending time and energy on equity issues. From everything I have seen, this is not the case. The district's policies, committees, and instructional practices strive to identify ways to level the playing field in the classroom and in school communities as a whole for minority groups and disadvantaged students. It concerns me that our teachers, members of the DELT, our Board Equity Liaison, and Dr. Shiroki Hali are all being villainized as having hidden agendas and drawn into hyper-politicized conversations, rather than simply being trusted and allowed to do the tasks they've been hired or asked to do in a professional and comprehensive way. I do my best to educate my daughter on societal biases in our past and present, and encourage her to put herself in the shoes of classmates who are different from her. But if there's anything I know as a parent, it's that there are certain things our children learn much better from their teachers or their peers, rather than from their parents, which is precisely why this is so important. Please don't make the mistake of evaluating the worth of our diversity and equity efforts only in the lens of budgets, grades, or measurable outcomes. At its core, this is about empathy and understanding each other, not about statistics on a page. If the board or its members have concrete suggestions of specific people, actions, or activities that could improve our equity and diversity efforts, great.
30 seconds.
But targeting the very people who are working hard to make this district a better place for everyone without having any viable alternatives at the ready is counterproductive and downright damaging. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel. Amanda, followed by Clint Wenninger.
Hello, my name is Amanda Schuman, and I live at 1124 Lindberg Avenue. Before I start, I would like to address that I think it's a little bit rich to compare indoctrination and criticize indoctrination in our classroom, and then turn around and criticize people for sitting while people pledge their allegiance to a national flag. But anyways, it has come to my attention that the board is currently discussing some issues on the best way to deal with equality and diversity in the School District of Waukesha. I'm here today as a citizen of the city of Waukesha, and as well as Waukesha North alumni, to make sure that not only is my voice heard, but when the board engages in these discussions, they do so from a place of good faith and are well-educated on the topics at hand. First, I've been told that you have some concerns about a certain Dr. Hali and how their views may relate to critical race theory. The conversation surrounding critical race theory is a long one, and not one that can be covered in the span of three minutes. However, I will do my best to summarize it here, and I trust that as representatives of my community, that you will do your due diligence and research it afterwards with the depth that it deserves. I know critical race theory has become a sort of buzzword in the political sphere as of late, but please realize that a lot of the discussion around it is largely fear-mongering. And the theory basically boils down to something I am sure we have And the theory basically boils down to something I am sure we have all heard at some point in time. Those that don't know history are doomed to repeat it. Critical race theory is not anti-white. It is teaching history accurately and in the lens of understanding how historically our system has been prejudiced against certain groups of people, people of color in this case, and how that affects the disparities we see today. Critical race theory and the movement as a whole doesn't teach that white people are responsible for the actions of our ancestors. However, we are responsible for recognizing and helping to fix the inequalities that have resulted from the actions of our ancestors. We are all responsible for bettering our species as humans and ensuring equality for all, and that starts with working to right the wrongs that have been put in place over our lifetimes and the lifetimes before us. As the great Martin Luther King put it, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. This work starts with us listening to and learning about how these disparities affect people of color. We, as white people, have dominated the social space and social commentary in this country since it was founded. Now it is time for us to hold space for those who have been affected by the mistakes of the past and present and hear their voices. This is not something we need to be afraid of or defensive to. It is a time for us to be humble and move forward with solutions, and the first step in that solution is educating ourselves. Please allow our teachers the freedom and resources they need to facilitate this learning process for themselves. Shutting down or limiting this conversation from taking place is detrimental to the growth of our community and our work to lift up marginalized people of color. Giving in to the paranoia surrounding this conversation would only set us and the next generation back and further the racial disparity our communities already struggle with. We need the resources to understand the unique challenges of different races in our country so that we can actually make progress in treating everyone equally. It is crucial to our growth as a nation, and it must start at the local level, and it must start at having well-educated teachers in the classroom.
Thank you, Amanda. Clint, followed by Jen Fritz. Hi, Clint.
Hi, good evening. Clint Wenninger, 2123 Springbrook North. It's been a while since I've been before the board, and last time I was here, I couldn't see anybody's face. So after a year of coming to meetings, it's nice to be able to actually put names with people, faces with people. It's good to see. I wanted to come tonight to, first of all, thank those that fought hard the last year to get our kids back in school, not only the existing board members, but the two new board members that ran. Appreciate you putting up your time, your service, and putting your money where your mouth is in running. It is much appreciated, and thank you, and I look forward to the work that you're going to do going forward. I also appreciate you getting rid of some of those mandates at the end of the year. It was good to see the kids actually be able to celebrate graduation, do prom, do all those things that high school kids should get to do, and that's because you guys made it happen. I appreciate that. Couple of comments from last night's Q and L meeting. I do appreciate the update that was brought up on the grades. However, it was just focused on the number of Fs. I would have liked to seen a little more key area comparisons, like how were absences a second semester compared to the first semester? What was the average GPAs that semester compared to before? Of those failed classes, how many of those were core classes that the kids needed to graduate, and how many of those kids are now behind? It would be nice to see how some of that information would curtail. I appreciate a lot of discussion last night. You could tell that people are working hard, but it's not something that's done yet. So we do have a lot of catching up to do. And finally, I wasn't going to really say anything else, but after watching that meeting last night, about the long discussions on equity and culturally responsive teaching, I just couldn't help myself. And part of it is, is because according to some of the comments I made tonight, by me walking in this room already as a 52-year-old white male, people know my background, my experiences, my history, what I've done to get myself here today. No, they don't. None of us here know what we've gone through in our lives to get to this point. And this whole cultural and responsive practices and equity, I know we boil it down to two key phrases, but if it's the meat behind the bones. Go on the website of the DPI and look at it. This is more than just providing equity. This is all about race and teaching us to look at people by race. That's very divisive and toxic to our environment and doesn't do any good for our kids. This should not be taught in our school any way, manner, form. Thank you.
Thank you, Clint. Jen?
Good evening.
Welcome, Jen.
Hello, I'm Jen Fritz from Big Bend. I read an article this past winter about a study that showed that infants as young as three months old favor their primary caregiver. This should come as no surprise. This is the face that the child sees most often, the one that represents comfort, sustenance, safety, and love anytime they reach out for it. True to form in this era of illogical identity politics, the article's summary was this: "Children as young as three months old exhibit racial preferences, and as such, it is evident that racism begins in the home." It's absurd to take a beautiful bond that is crucial for an infant's healthy development and paint it with the brush of racism. But that is the theme of critical race theory, isn't it? Finding racism where there is none. How can we insert racism into every situation? How can we convince innocent children that they are indeed racist, have been so since three months old apparently, and that their family is the real enemy, the one perpetuating this evil? This quote is a strong one to me. "Our lives are shaped and guided by stories. The stories we're told become the stories we tell. The more we hear them, the more we believe them. When used as a tool, they help us to better understand where we came from and where we're going. When used as a weapon, they can be deadly." One of the most dangerous stories we've been told is the one that goes something like this: "Humanity is a failed experiment. We're parasites, a cancer, a virus." It is a myth that permeates our movies, our music, our media, and our minds. As they say, repeat a lie often enough, it becomes truth. We are calling out CRT as the lie that it is, a pervasive evil that needs to be eradicated from any and all curriculum. Educators should be focusing instead on strong, nonpartisan, color-blind values such as work ethic, delayed gratification, positive attitude, and personal responsibility. These are qualities available to and attainable by any person from any background. As children move on to become contributing members of society, these are traits that will serve them and everyone around them well. We don't need more unhinged, incoherent, screaming social justice warriors. We need real people with real values being actual assets and contributors to our society. We refuse CRT in all its forms and names. Call it whatever euphemisms you want, but if you put lipstick on a pig, it's still a pig. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you to those who addressed the board tonight. We're going to move on to our minute approval. There are several minutes for our consideration. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm moved.
Moved by Mr. McCaffrey. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Dietz. Any discussion? Corrections? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes seven zero, Sue. Moving on to our communications and Waukesha Education Foundation report, Dr. Seibert.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Como. I have a few pieces of communication this evening. The first is from the Classic Eight Conference. We have a few from that location. And Waukesha North was the recipient of the Classic Eight Conference Sportsmanship Award for both boys golf and girls soccer. So we congratulate Mr. Schley, the coaches, and all of those student athletes. Waukesha West was the recipient of the Classic Eight Conference Sportsmanship Award for boys tennis and for boys baseball, and so we also congratulate Mr. Lemieux, the coaches, and all of those student athletes. And Waukesha South was the recipient of the overall Classic Conference Eight Championship Award for this school year, and it was based on the rankings from their opponents. And so they are recognized for girls in boys tennis, girls cross-country, boys golf, wrestling, boys soccer, and girls swim. So we certainly congratulate Mr. Sobrinsky and now Mr. Schreier and all those coaches and student athletes. And then I just wanted to make mention of a nice card that Sue and I received. The two of us worked together on picking the winners for the Lila Draper Burton Scholarship Fund, and this one came to us. It was very touching. It was from one of the students, Fiona, who received one of the many scholarships that we were able to give out. And what was neat about it was she didn't believe perhaps that she'd be able to go to college based on her family's financial situation, and she had some confidence issues. But once she saw that she was the recipient of this particular scholarship, it really lifted her spirits, and now she's very excited to attend the University of Minnesota. And it's just nice to be able to see that a lot of the things that we do can help a lot of kids have futures and dreams fulfilled.
Thank you. Thank you for that. We typically would have the Waukesha Education Foundation update, but Corey was unable to be with us this evening. Dr. Seibert, I don't know if you wanted to mention any, anything. Were you at the meeting?
I was, yes. And Mr. Matteo was there as well. We discussed primarily some updates on various things. There's a couple of different events that are upcoming. The WEF golf outing is the most current. That's August 4th. It's been full for a significant period of time already, so that's a great sign. And then we also have the Evening for Education. That'll be coming up in October. And actually, I skipped. There's the, there's another event at the Morningstar Golf Club in July. I believe it's on the 21st. That's another event that we'll be hosting. So Lynette does just a tremendous job, and the board is great, and it's just so wonderful to have an education foundation that supports the school district of Waukesha in the very important way that it does.
Yes, thank you for that impromptu report there. Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
That's fine.
And I'm sure we can, anyone who's interested in any of those events can go to waukeshaeducationfoundation.org and get more information. So, thank you. We do not have a charter school and program report tonight, and although we are agendized for the CISA I report this evening, we're going to delay that to next month. And we're on item L at this time, our annual expulsion resolution. Each year, we are required to pass this resolution if we want to work in groups of three or panels in which consist of three people, as opposed to having nine board members in every expulsion. Dr. Cook, will you please present details on the resolution?
Yeah, so going back to 1996, the board has used an expulsion panel through an approved resolution at the board, and with the authority of State Statute 12013 Sub 1 Sub E, the board then can conduct expulsions by a three-member panel. The expulsion resolution also indicates that if one member of that three-member panel is absent, two of the three members can conduct that expulsion hearing. So it must be renewed each year. We bring it to you in July this year so that it is ready to go in September, should it be needed.
Any questions? Motions? Mr. McCaffrey?
I move approval of the annual expulsion resolution as presented.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Amanda? I'm so thankful that we can have this as an option. Prior to me even being a board member, it used to be nine board members in an expulsion They're very sensitive kinds of hearings, as you can imagine, and they're pretty intimidating just with three board members. I can't imagine being a student facing nine board members. It makes us more efficient, and I think the quality of the hearings, I think, really goes up. Any other comments or questions? Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes seven zero. Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda. Darren, it looks like we had quite a number of gifts given again this month.
Yes, five gifts tonight. Hawthorne Elementary received $16,000 from Terrence Indiana Shadeburg to be used to enrich students' classroom experience socially, emotionally, and academically. Waukesha North, South, and West High School received $2,000 from Pro Healthcare to help sponsor the purchase of VR software from Embodied Labs that provide different experiences that put students into lifelike scenarios that would enhance their experience with patient care, specifically geriatric patients. Waukesha Transition Academy received $500 from the Kiwanis Early Risers of Waukesha to purchase iPads for five young students who are exiting the program after this school year. Waukesha School District received $2,200 from an anonymous donor to help pay off South senior student fees. And Saratoga STEM Academy received $2,750 from Charles and Kimberly Tender to be used for the replacement of the basketball hoops on Saratoga's playground.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, and thank you to all those who have given this month and continue to give. Sometimes there's repeat gifts, and so thank you for your generosity. So the, there's various items in our consent agenda this evening for us to consider. Included in that, included in the items for approval is a decision on the expulsion panel which met on June 14th, 2021. A confidential communication regarding the details of the expulsions is in your Friday, was in your Friday packet, along with the minutes included under item number 1H. If any board member wishes to discuss this item separately, we do have scheduled a closed session if necessary. Approval of the consent agenda does confirm full board agreement with the expulsion panel's action. Also, and this is per our new policy, we are now looking at policies and bylaws being included in the consent agenda, and we do have one policy and bylaw that could be removed and discussed separately if we want, just like we could remove an expulsion and discuss separately. We have this month, policy number 5630.01, use of seclusion and physical restraints of students. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside in our consent agenda for separate consideration, please so indicate at this time. I see none. Amanda, will you please present the consent agenda for approval?
Yes, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resource and Compensation Committee approved of 11 resignations and 23 new or modified teacher contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed at your desk. I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Dietz. Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes seven zero, Sue. Moving on to our super. Thank you, Amanda, for that. Moving on to our superintendent's report given by Dr. Seibert.
All right, thank you, Mr. Como. So just one item for the board. I just want to share my excitement. I've been sharing this with you in the updates of being able to get out in the community. It's something I wish I could have done last summer. The timing just with COVID wasn't there. But I've been taking a number of different business tours and being able to connect with business leaders in the community, which has been great. And then we're also scheduling a number of meetings with our local elected officials, as well as our local legislators with the Government Relations Committee that'll begin later this month. So it's just nice to be able to be back, having interaction and having conversations, and it's a wonderful community to be a part of. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Moving on to our committee reports. Committees is where most of the heavy lifting, the detailed work is done, and we do rotate which committees report out first in this month. We are going to start with the Policy Committee. The report is going to be given by Patrick McCaffrey this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. There was one policy action item listed on the consent agenda this evening, revisions to policy 5630.01, use of seclusion and physical restraint with students. The consent agenda was approved, including revision to policy 5630.01 with the addition the principal or designated will attempt to contact the parent on the day of the incident. We have two.
day of the incident. We have two discussion information items on the agenda. The following two policies were discussed at the Policy Committee last month. Policy 5320, immunizations. The committee reviewed the current district immunization policy. COVID vaccinations are not required by the current immunization policy. In addition, parents have the right to request a waiver of the immunization requirements based on reasons of health, religion, or personal conviction. Staff members and students should remain neutral and not pressure others regarding whether or not to receive the COVID vaccination. Everyone should feel safe and comfortable in the school environment. Is there any discussion on that policy?
Mr. Zanobia?
Yeah. The only point I would like to make is when the topic was brought up by myself, there wasn't a place to put it. So it naturally...
Can, we can't hear you, Anthony. Maybe a little closer.
Is that better?
When I had originally brought up the COVID vaccination, there was no place to put it, as we discussed. So it ended up in this policy of immunizations. The only discussion or comment I'd like to have on it is going forward, there still really isn't a place to put the COVID, which is urgency use authorization at this point. So we know that it's not a fully approved vaccine yet. And in a pandemic, I don't know that this policy fully addresses this potential need in the future. So I don't know if that's worth looking at further, that specific part of it. I have seen other policies in other districts that have amended this to reflect a pandemic, if you will. That would be my only comment to make. Otherwise, I think everything that's been discussed in relation to specifically the COVID vaccination here at SDW has been, you know, certainly well received by me. So I think we've made a lot of progress there.
Mr. Dietz?
It's my understanding too that vaccinations for COVID will not be given in any district sites. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Dr. Piasik?
I don't know if we have this clarification right now, but do we understand as well that if there are athletic physicals offered on site, that that will not include vaccinations?
It has been confirmed that there will be no vaccinations at the South Clinic.
Other questions, comments? Mr. McCaffrey?
All right. My second discussion information item is policy 060167.3, public comment at board meetings. The committee suggested the following revisions to the policy. Participants who are minors will not be asked to announce their address, nor will their address be published in the minutes. The area behind the speaker and podium will be cleared during the public comment. And committee chairs will announce speaker expectations prior to public comment portion of the committee meetings. This policy will be included on the agenda at the July Policy Committee meeting for further discussion. Question on that policy?
Dr. Piasik?
Just a couple of points I'd like to share with the full board. There was an item that was requested to be addressed in the revision that will be taken up at the next policy meeting. And that was limits on the amount of time that if someone were suspended from speaking at a board meeting, that we would have, any of that, that communication would include a timeframe because right now it's indefinite. So we had asked that to be added to the policy. There was also some discussion around items G and I that were related to, to who participants could speak to when they're giving their public comments. My preference and strong recommendation is that we don't restrict what citizens can say when they're at the podium outside of things that are offensive or explicit that may not be appropriate for children in the room. But that's something that I think will still be up for discussion at the next policy meeting before we come to a conclusion about what to move forward. So I think those items are relevant to all of us in the room. So I would just ask if there's input to that, that you offer that before we meet next.
Yeah, Mr. Dietz?
Just one addition to Dr. Piasik's comments. The current policy says the presiding officer of the committee or board meeting would be able to waive these rules, which seems pretty ridiculous if we've spent all this time on developing requirements and expectations. So we'll take a look at that too and hopefully correct that as well.
Mr. Zanobia?
One of the questions, one of the areas we discussed in this policy, not only to Dr. Piasik's point about if someone is banned, how long will that time be? But also some of the reasons that they have been banned, which is one that's recently come up is obscenities. And it's, it's been brought to my attention by several people to this point that if they were to get up and read materials that are in our libraries or possibly even in our curriculum, they would not only break our obscenity rules, but our pornography rules if we would have any. And so my concern is, right now, this policy, which we discussed somewhat in the committee prohibits any teacher, student, parent to get up and address. But it seems the board would be very sensitive to hear, but that the students in this school district are hearing. I brought just one example tonight, which I'm not going to read, but it is apparently in the North, it was used in a class at North High School, I believe it was ninth grade English, and it remains in the library there. If I read excerpts, I would be in violation of the policy. I think they are prohibiting the truth that needs to be told in some instances by parents and others in our community about what our kids are being exposed to. And I think this policy, if this is where we're going to continue this discussion, will allow for the materials that students are exposed to at every grade level, not be too sensitive to hear it ourselves. That's my discussion comment on that.
I think one of the tricky things that we're going to have to work through on this, and I hope the committee takes this into consideration, we don't need people calling people names or making statements that are inappropriate with vulgar, vulgar language directed to specific people. I just, I just don't think that's appropriate. We do not have the ability to censor what comes out of people's mouths, right? So we do have students that do watch this. We also ask that people respect the board. We also ask that we have people who are addressing the board to respect the audience. So you need to take respect into consideration too. What does that look like? What doesn't that look like? So just a few thoughts for, for the committee to, to, to consider there. It's, it's tricky. It's tricky. I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Zanobia. I, it's just gonna, we're gonna have to figure, figure that out. And it might be in committee more than just another month. Sometimes things take some time. Yeah, Mr. Zanobia?
If I may just clarify, I agree with you that when obscenity, and I think that was probably the spirit of why that was put there. That is used at a, at a member of the board or at someone else, you're right, it, it's not, this is not the place for that. But to Mr. Dietz's point, when he said, why would there be a reason to waive the rules? I think we ought to consider that the reason to leave that there would be, if we know a material is coming in that we need to hear as a board, pertaining to curriculum, books, whatever, that we should be able to waive the rules and hear it. That's my only suggestion.
I do think that we need to also take into consideration perhaps circumstances that can't be completely outlined. So a lot of times our policies are written so that we don't detail out. Let's just take the dress code, for example. We're not going to put a laundry list together of the items you can and can't wear. It'd be impossible. We'd be changing that every time there's fashion changes. So I, I do think that there could be some extenuating circumstances that could exist during comments that, that the chair needs to have some liberty as to whether it is appropriate for things to continue. Let me give you an example. What if we had a brawl break out? Let's say 30 people just start fist fighting. Are we going to try and just bring it to order and hear the rest of the conversation? It might be pretty tough. So just keep, keep in mind that the chair may need to have the ability to control the situation a little bit more. And I'm not saying down to every little detail, but there, there could be exceptions. Mr. Dietz? Oh, Greg, can you turn your mic on?
I disagree with anything you say. You know, if it's related to curriculum, you know, something in the classroom, I think that's fair game for the board to listen to. When I refer to that as the chair has the right to, let's look exactly what it says, waive these rules, I'm like, why are we having a policy if we're waiving everything? That's where I was coming from. I'm not against what you're saying. So, and I'd be more than happy to work with you to clarify that when we look into the policy. So, thank you.
Other discussion, question, comments? Yeah, Dr. Piasik?
The brawl is covered. Item I four. We can stop and break up the fight. I just want to take people back to May for a second. I mean, there, I think every, every one of you and maybe at my hands at some point, but I, Mr. Zanobia and I received a lot of feedback. A lot of it was not positive after we made some decisions around COVID mitigations. And I think we were obligated to hear what people had to say. So it didn't bother me at all that comments were directed at me. And I think if we're going to have public comments, we need to be willing to listen. So I would agree that there's, there's a point where we, we want to ask people to be appropriate because we're representing children. But I think Mr. Zanobia makes a really good point that we're going to try to put a lot of rules in to stop people from saying or doing certain things. You know, we're going to make ourselves crazy trying to hold ourselves, everyone accountable to those rules. So, and I think we have, for the most part, a relatively open speaking policy. We don't set limits like some districts do that you have to be in the district or you have to meet a certain criteria. I think that's a good thing. I think we should continue with that and be as open to hearing public comments as we possibly can. And that means even the stuff we don't like.
Yeah, some, some districts restricted us just to agendized items. We really have it open to any, any item. I'm a, I'm a First Amendment believer. Some, I think this is the greatest country in the world. And the First Amendment is one of the best things that has ever happened to people in the history of the United States. How do we balance that with having the ability to keep order is really what, what we're trying to do. So that's really the challenge, I think, that the committee has before it. I'm, I'm with you, Dr. Piasik, where I, over 20 years, I've had many, many communications with people. And, and I do need to hear the good, the bad, and the ugly. And I appreciate that. And that's what makes this country great, is to be able to speak freely without, you know, worry. And it's, it's very important. We still need to maintain order. So how do we balance that? That's, that's really what this policy is all about. Yes, Pat?
President, the next Policy Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, July 20th at 6:00 PM. That completes the Policy Committee report.
How about if you roll right into Finance and Facilities?
Alrighty. We have two action items and three discussion information items on the agenda this evening. The first action item is approval of the 2020, 2021 budget amendments. At the time the budget is adopted, the budget contains the administration's best estimates of the district's anticipated revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year. As the year proceeds, additional information becomes available that impacts the sources available and the planned uses of district funds. The budget amendment before you tonight reflects the movement of existing budgeted money to different categories, which better portrays the outcome of the fiscal year. The committee approved the 2021, the 2020, 2021 budget amendments as presented and I so move.
Is there a second to that motion? Standing by Mrs. Reinacek? Discussion? Questions? This is typically done at the end of the year and also mid-year. Sue, why don't you take the roll call vote?
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes seven zero. Pat?
Our second action item is the approval of the district COVID-19 letter. The committee reviewed the letter regarding COVID-19 that will be sent to families. This letter outlines the mitigation efforts that will be filed for the 2021, 2022 school year, including optional mask, no limits on class sizes, and a welcome back of visitors and volunteers to our schools. The committee approved the COVID-19 letter as presented and I so move.
Is there a second to that? Standing by Mr. Dietz? Discussion? Dr. Piasik?
Yeah, I would just like to start by thanking the administration for being open to returning to some normalcy. And I think this letter very nicely articulates that we've gotten to a point where maybe we've resumed to some, some trust and confidence that we're going to get through this, and that we want kids back in the classroom at all costs. I, I think that this letter is important because I think that it will help families make decisions about the fall. I do think there are going to be some additional questions, however, and I was hoping maybe just to get a little bit of clarification on a few points. One is the, the way that, that it is articulated and the way that, that I understand from discussion is that testing for COVID is not a requirement to return to school if someone is homesick and may have symptoms associated with COVID. So, so while we will be tracking positive cases that we know about, testing is not required to return to school.
That's correct.
And the other is related to contact tracing. Is it, am I correct in, in my understanding that if we are aware of a positive test, then we will trace that test and notify?
We would notify people, similar to what we did from May 12th onward. We would notify people who were close contacts, but we wouldn't be excluding anyone who was a close contact.
Is that, is there a county or state or CDC requirement that we're contact tracing? Or is it...
There isn't, but there was a request in May that we continue that for the remainder of the school year. And I believe that it would be good practice to keep those that want to know informed so that they can make their best decision. Knowing that we're seeing very few cases at the time, it's something that's very manageable for us to do.
And are we, have we maintained the, all of the contact tracers that we had on staff? No?
No, we do have one person assisting us for summer school, but the rest of the people were let go.
Okay. So if, if someone were notified as a close contact, we would follow the same procedures that we have right now, which is an optional...
Correct. It would be, yeah, it'd be up to the person if they wanted to exclude themselves, but we wouldn't be requiring it.
Other questions or comments on the letter to parents? Other questions or comments on the letter to parents? Well, I am glad, if this passes, I'm glad that we are able to let our parents and students know what's up for the next school year at this time so that they can properly make their decisions and prepare for the school year. Unfortunately, last year, we weren't in that position. There were lots of decisions, lots of information. God bless you. It was down to the wire in August. You know, we did the best we could with the information we had and the long debates that we had. So, this year is quite different. So, if this does pass, when would this letter go out, Dr. Seabird?
So, we'd work on getting it out tomorrow or Friday. We just would need to get it translated. And so, I'll work with Mary Jo and Natalia to do that.
Okay. Questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Zenobia?
Yes, maybe just a couple of clarifications. Every notification that we would make then under this letter would really be due to self-reporting, correct? I mean, someone's going to test, they're going to find out they have it, they're going to notify the school, and we'll tell people that came in close contact. Is that correct? It's kind of a, we're kind of at a self-reporting point.
We're at a self-reporting point, but we do have access to the state test result system. So, if you go in for a COVID test and you're a student, that information is put in a database, and we have access to that.
The second point I would wonder about, there was a, I guess, there's a dashboard on the website set up when all this was going on, at the height of it, this was put in place to see if there was anything in the community triggering a response to do something. It looks like that will, that dashboard will remain in place, and if it does, call back to board, we would talk about it.
Yeah, that's the transition criteria, I think, that you're referring to.
Transition criteria. That would stay on the website. I mean.
I mean, since we've, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, is that necessary at this point? Or is it just because it's there, helpful, it's information? I mean, I guess, that's my question.
That is a good question.
You know, we believe that the more information we can communicate and put out there for our community to see, the more transparent it would be when we came down to a decision point. The nice thing about the transition requirement was the only thing that it triggered was a meeting to talk about where we were at. It wasn't a decision point, other than to have a meeting. So, to track it, it's something that's manageable for us, and we believe that it would let the community know where we're at and give parents some opportunity to see if things were ticking up. You know, they would begin to know then that we're going to have that meeting and have that discussion.
Thank you.
And we're looking to keep that the same, right? So, we would need six of the eight criteria?
Or one of those, like one of the major?
Correct. Six of the eight criteria, and we might, if we ever ran into the situation, we didn't have enough bus drivers, we didn't have enough people for food service, we'd obviously have to make a decision then, that morning, similar to like what a snow day would look like.
And we implemented that at the end of January, was it?
I think it was in January that was approved by the board.
And I don't know if we've ever gone beyond two.
I think our highest, the highest point that we hit in that monitoring was in that November time, where I think we had four of the eight.
We did have four.
We did have four at that, in that November time.
I stand corrected. Thank you for having a better.
But that also matched all the data that we were seeing from the community, the state, and the county of Oaxaca.
Mr. Dietz?
I don't believe the letter addresses E achieve at all. Is there a reason that that shouldn't be in there as a choice for parents or an option?
We have that letter in the second to last, or that statement is in the second to last. So, we do talk about we've expanded four-year-old kindergarten at E achieve.
Okay. Yeah, okay. That's my fault. I missed it then. Yeah, just wanted to double check. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Piasik?
One final thing, just to make sure that we're following the right procedure. And at the May 12th meeting, we passed a motion, I think everybody was pretty tired by then, but it was to move the remaining mitigations to the operations committee for communication in June. With this letter, my understanding is that all mitigations are essentially ended at this point. Is that accurate? There's no remaining?
Dr. Seabird?
That is accurate. It will continue to maintain our cleaning protocols daily. But, yes, so you and I had talked, and Dr. Cook, a little bit about that, if you'd like to include that in the motion to ensure that the school operations committee wouldn't be necessary based on the fact that the mitigation strategies are eliminated.
And it is, it is an administrative committee, so I mean, if, I guess it's a, it would be up to a board member if they wanted to have an amendment to this, just to be clear. But what I'm hearing is it's your intention and Dr. Cook's intention that we don't really need to bring that group together.
We didn't believe so. We didn't believe in Dr. Cook, correct me if I'm wrong, but we didn't believe we had much to discuss. So, we thought we could summarize the back-to-school plan in this letter. But to Dr. Piasik's point, we did have the motion that everything would go through the committee. So, I respect if the board would like to just mention that in approval of the letter.
Yes. Mr. Clark?
Follow up on Jim's, or Dr. Seabird's comments. We will be cleaning every day, but last year, we were spraying the room every day, and CDC is even coming out saying that we shouldn't move away from that. So, cleaning will be happening every day, but we haven't finalized our plan, but more than likely, we won't be fogging the rooms on a regular basis. I just want to, so everyone's clear on what our intent or we think our eventual intent will be in that regard, just so there's no.
Will we be running our ventilation systems throughout the entire day as opposed to shutting them down? Prior to COVID, we were shutting down the ventilation, but we had seen that if we kept the ventilation systems on?
We haven't had that, that specific conversation, but I would think we would leave the airflow where it's at now as maxed out as much as our systems can handle, which varies by building.
Which proved to be quite effective in studies that were brought to our attention, correct?
Yes, I've read that in some places, but there's a study for everything, so.
Sure, sure. Fair enough. Fair enough. Mr. Zenobia?
One final thing. There was Plexiglas installed, correct? Everywhere, but in many places. I mean, that would, that been removed, or what's the plan for that?
Yes, that will be removed.
Any plan for it after it's removed?
That I don't know. I mean, we invested quite a bit of money in it, so I would think, maybe Mr. Clark can help with that. We'd probably try to hold on to it in case we would need it again.
Right now, it's, and I think we should go back to May and look at the motions, because one of those motions was principals' guidance on some of these things. So, we may have passed that authority on, so we might want to revisit that. But right now, what we're doing with the Plexiglas is storing it on-site for now, because we don't, you know, you just don't know. I mean, we don't have a warehouse at all, so, but at some point, we'll have to have that conversation, what do we do with it, hopefully.
All right. Any other questions or comments, amendments?
I think it would be simple enough to just rescind that motion from May, and then we can vote on the letter. Does that make sense?
Are we able to do that because we're not agendized for that?
Yeah, we'll just add to the motion.
We could make an amendment, though.
That's, yeah, that's all you're going to be able to do. We can't rescind a voted-on piece. That's not agenda. That would be illegal.
Do you need some time?
Since this, since this item is agendized, let's just.
Any further discussion or questions on approving the district COVID-19 letter to be going out to our parents, students? Yes, Mr. Dietz, I believe, had, Sue, did Mr. Dietz second it?
Yes, he did.
Okay. All right, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Karen Reincheck.
No, are you preparing for an amendment?
Well, I thought you were going to pass. I'm sorry. The other option that we could have, just to toss it out as a suggestion, is at the end of the meeting, the last item towards the end is other business. We could ask that to be agendized for our next, you know, at another meeting, to rescind the motion that was made back in May. Okay.
You just want, you just want one part of the motion that was rescinded? The operations committee that was?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and the reason, I mean, not to split hairs, but we took a vote and we committed to moving those decisions to a group, then that group's not going to exist, and we're going to replace it by a decision we're going to make here tonight. I just think it's appropriate to close it, so.
Well, I could.
Our administrative committee is governed by the policy on?
Well, any policy we create, administration's governed by.
No, I mean, the policy on committees and our administrative committees covered in it? The board committees, our administrative committees covered by that policy.
No, an administrative committee would not be on the public, the board committee. But there was a motion in May to direct everything through, through that committee. So, if the motion were then amended tonight, you know, the amended motion could be to the effect of that the letter would replace the committee action or the, you know, something to that effect.
I think, here, let me try this. Well, what I'm trying to do is, we'll just move to approve the district COVID-19 letter to families.
You'd just be making an amendment right now?
And all, and any remaining COVID mitigations would return to the administration.
Okay, so the, so the initial, the initial motion was to approve the district COVID-19 So, I think, so you're not looking to strike the whole motion, you just need to add to it. So, what's the part that you want to add? I'm sorry. So, the original motion, Sue, would you read it? And then we might be able to add, it might be easier to.
Was to approve the district COVID-19 letter as presented.
Let's just take this back to the next meeting, and we'll just rescind that motion at the next meeting.
Okay, fair enough. Fair enough. So, we are back to the original approval of the district COVID-19 letter. Are there any other discussions or potential amendments?
I'll have a question. I mean, did we add the amendment that the letter supplants the committee? Because that's the end game.
I would like to do that, but.
That's the end game, so.
Yeah, I would like to do that. But what I'm hearing is that Mr. Como is concerned that we weren't agendized to address the remaining mitigations. But I think this letter does. So, I think, I think it's fair to say.
Yeah, well, you can, you can, you could add that amendment.
You, you can't rescind a motion that was made?
Right.
But you could add something to this motion that would essentially turn that, yeah, nullify that particular motion made back in May.
Which is different than rescinding it?
Yes, it is. It is.
Okay. You moved, right?
I mean, yeah, I moved. And who seconded? I did.
So, are we going to have any amendments or not at this time? Okay, so I think we're back to the original motion?
Please.
You know, I think, I think what's most important is what our intent is. I don't think we should get too bogged down on verbiage. I think we understand the intent. We just can't rescind a motion because we weren't agendized for that. But we can amend this motion that essentially nullifies it. That's okay.
That's fine. Then I would, I would move to amend the motion to approve the district COVID-19 letter to families and nullify the May 12th motion to return remaining mitigations to the operations committee.
Okay. So, it's really just that second portion, and then and is what we're looking at right now. Let's make sure Sue got that.
Nullify the May 12th motion to return remaining mitigations to the operations committee.
And to administration, I thought you said.
And we're nullifying the motion that was to return.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry. Sorry, don't mean to complicate. Do we have a second to that amendment? Second by Mr. Zenobia? Okay, discussion on the amendment itself? Questions, comments? Okay, Sue, please take the vote on the amendment.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reincheck.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes 7-0. So, now the amendment is part of the full motion. Any further discussion on the full motion? And Sue, would you please read it back one more time, just so we know what we're voting on?
District COVID-19 letter to families and nullify the May 12th motion to return remaining mitigation operations committee.
Okay. Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Karen Reincheck.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
And Joseph Como.
Aye, passes 7-0. Patrick?
All right, thank you. Next up is our discussion information items. The first is the monthly budget report. Revenues and expenditures continue to be within budgeted limits for both the general and special education fund. The district is operating in accordance with our approved budget in all other funds as well.
Any discussion or comments on this? Patrick?
Our second discussion information item is the 2021-2022 budget development. The current draft of the 2021-2022 budget and potential tax levy scenarios were presented. There will be several changes, including the impact of the final state of Wisconsin by annual budget being approved to this document as we move towards final approval in October. Next month, the committee will be asked to consider approving the preliminary budget in preparation for the budget hearing, which will be held in September.
Any questions or comments on that? Okay, Patrick?
All right. Our final discussion information item is referendum projects budget update. The committee reviewed the projects and budget related to the 2018 referendum. We are on budget and on schedule for substantial completion of all projects by August 31st, 2021.
Any questions, comments? Just real quick, just again, a shout out to our community that supported us in all these projects. Now that we're getting back to more normal times, we're going to have volunteers and parents in to be able to witness the renovations, and we hope that, you know, people have a chance to really witness all the good work that was done. COVID kind of tamped down this a little bit. So, I encourage you to go out to the various schools and to see the changes that have been made. And a big thank you to our constituents. 66% of this community supported those changes, and that's, that's a, that's a big, that's a big win, and thank you for, for that. Patrick?
All righty. Our next finance and facilities committee meeting is August 9th at 5:30 PM. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving on to teaching and learning given by Mr. Dietz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last teaching and learning committee meeting was held yesterday, July 6, 2021, at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom. One action item and three discussion information items appear on the agenda for teaching and learning. learning this evening. Our one action item is approval of our school district of Waukesha educational standards for the 2021-2022 school year. School board must annually include an item on the agenda at the first board meeting of the school year that clearly identifies the student academic standards adopted by the board that will be in effect for the upcoming school year. Declaration of educational standards is required by state legislation, section 120.12 parentheses, 13 parentheses of the state statute, Wisconsin Act 55, says to notify the parents and guardians of students enrolled in the school district of the student academic standards that will be in effect for the school year. This information is located on the district's homepage along the left-hand side under annual notices, as well as a more detailed ma, matrix under the teaching and learning section of our website. On a vote of four to zero, the teaching and learning committee approved the school district of Waukesha educational standards as presented. We request board approval and I so move.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
And by Ms. Roddy? Discussion, comments? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kelly Piassek.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes seven zero. Sue, Greg?
Our first discussion information item was the high school final grades update. Rachel Herman, our director of secondary learning, was accompanied by North High School principal Kristen Higgins to provide the board members with an update of our end of the year progress at the high school level. This was an area that we reviewed after the first semester grades came out and as we were transitioning back to a full face-to-face instructional model. Now that the second semester has concluded, this was a progress update for the board.
Questions or discussion on this? Okay, Greg?
Okay. Our second discussion information item was equity and culturally relevant teaching strategies. In response to a request from board member, Mr. Zenobia, that we discuss our equity programs and our culturally relevant teaching strategies, Jody Landish, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, presented our equity work from the past several years, as well as gave an update of historical perspective of the learning and partnerships that have taken place in the school district of Waukesha. Our Friday board packet included most of the information that was presented at last night's meeting.
Questions or discussion on this? Dr. Piassek?
Thank you. Um, I, I'm not going to add any more comments than what I shared last night. I know we talked about this at length. Obviously, there are a lot of, a lot of people who are very passionate about this, who came to speak tonight as well. What I think came from the discussion last night was maybe just a little bit of ambiguity. I was hoping that we would have a little bit more clarity on where we were going with the conversation. We had made a decision based on the workshop, uh, or I think administration had made a decision based on the workshop to pull the, um, some of the language down from the website so that the board would have a chance to review it. What we talked about last night, though, really didn't help us set a timeline around that. And, um, I think there was, part of the discussion was that, um, or some had suggested that we would just take our time. Um, I think, given the number of people who have come tonight who are interested in this issue, um, we, we probably don't want to take our time. We talked about months or years. When I listen to folks talk and, and I've received quite a bit of emails on both sides of the issue, I think there's a lot that we agree on as a community, that we want inclusion and we want respect and we want our students to succeed and we want, we want to speak truthfully about history. So there's a lot that we share in common. I think there's some subtle things that are really triggering a lot of this conversation and we need to address those things. And some of those things tend to pop up in our professional development programming. So, um, I know that, um, you know, we, we have a lot of work to do, but I've spent quite a bit of time looking into the material, talking to people, trying to understand as well as I can what it is that we're doing. Um, and I think we've got some training planned for the fall, I'm sorry, for later this summer that is currently mandatory, that we need to have some clarity and transparency on what the expectations are for staff participa, participation in that training.
Um, Jody or Dr. Seibert, would you be able to provide more details on what that training looks like, what it's focused on?
I can do that. Uh, so again, the thought was in August that each staff member would participate in a three and a half hour session around the specific topic of BAB, which stands again for validate, affirm, build, and bridge. So some of the things that we're looking for, and I'll just read the definitions of those things that we would be, uh, teaching and role-playing in terms of, um, sort of classroom management and relationship building. Validate implies the intentional and purposeful legitimization of the home culture and language of the students, um, that are in our classrooms. Affirm talks about the intentional and purposeful effort to reverse any negative stereotypes of non-mainstream cultures and languages portrayed in historical perspectives. Using, uh, build, building talks about understanding and recognizing students' cultural and linguistic behaviors and using those behaviors of students to foster rapport and relationships with them. Use of affirmation will extend to all students for their efforts, engagement, and contributions. And then looking at the bridge part, bridging is providing the academic and social skills that students will need to have success beyond the classroom. This would be evident when the students themselves can navigate school and mainstream culture successfully, to connect with all students and families as they understand and celebrate the customs, values, communication styles, and bilingualism that make up the complex individual cultures of their students to create authentic learning opportunities. That's kind of the continuum of the professional learning that our teachers would engage in during that time in August.
Ms. Roddy?
Just a follow-up to Dr. Piassek's questions with regards to the timeline. I thought it was said that in the August meeting, this, um, the discussion about, um, the statements that were removed would be brought back to us and then brought again to us in September for possible action. Did I mishear that?
You did not mishear that, um, Amanda. I said that in the beginning of the meeting, but then as we were getting more feedback from board members, I thought what I heard from board members was a, a pretty big need about expanding membership of the district equity leadership team. So at face value, we can absolutely bring back in August the belief and the embrace statements that that collaborative district equity leadership team worked on. However, as I was receiving more feedback throughout the night, I was hearing that we wanted to engage more parents and get more feedback on that. That is why I said probably at the end of the meeting to Dr. Piassek's comment that we could take our time, because that was in, in the spirit of engaging more stakeholders. So--
I do remember that piece, too. Okay, thank you. What I was referring to was, um, I think it was Mr. Como who had said we would take a little bit longer time and maybe not review those statements right away?
Um, well, I can tell you what I meant--
Sure.
--by what I said. So last night, I said something along the lines of, this is not an event, that this is a process. I, I think if people think that we're going to talk about equity one month, two months, and then that's it, we're fooling ourselves. I think there's, we're going to be talking about this for a long time. We have an administrative committee that's been developed. They're going to be working on various aspects of this, just like we have administrative committees to do a, a variety of things. We talked about the curriculum committee, where we get advice from various stakeholders on important matters. And sometimes, I mean, this last year, um, the Delt team, it was a foundational year and, and they're trying to define just basically what, what they're all about. It was just their first year. And it was a group of people and their, um, my understanding is that intent has always been to grow that out to parents and to get feedback from, from a wider variety of, of, people who, uh, take an interest in this. Um, so my statement was pretty much that it's kind, kind of like COVID is here to stay in the world. We're not, we, just because we're not focused on some of the, the, the things this August that we were last August, it's not going to take as much time. You saw us tonight approve a letter that's going to pretty much give our parents the chance to get ready for this next school year, where last year we, we just didn't have that kind of time that we could give our parents. I think this is one of those topics that we will continually be addressing in a variety of manners. What, um, how do we, um, you know, what does our training look like for our, our teachers, for our administrators? What does that look like this year? What does that look like in, in future years? How can we bring balance? One of the things that I've heard from our constituents is an importance to bring balance. So if we, you know, I, I, um, I do think that there are points of views that are very different that we should be introducing to this. Um, I had heard the suggestion of Larry Elder. I've heard the suggestion of Herman Cain. They have some brilliant ideas and there's more than one way to look at, um, many aspects of this. And I think we, um, as a district, need to make sure that we are looking at things in a balanced manner. Um, that's not going to happen overnight. So my, my comment is, is, was meant to be that this isn't just a, a one and done topic. It's, it's, it's something that we're going to be talking about quite a bit. And we're not, we're not going to be able to just have one motion and one vote and then just have everything cleared up. It just, it's not a topic that allows for that. So that's all that I meant, Dr. Piassek, uh, by my comment. Mr. Zenobia?
Uh, thank you. I, uh, I agree with you that this is not a topic that can be tackled in a month. Motioned away and it's going to take a long time. And what I mean by that is, um, a lot that's been going on in the district in the form of the, the district equity leadership team, the Delt team, um, that's come to our attention recently, that I would feel the board, I think this goes to Dr. Piassek's point, the board should have time to review these things, uh, not only the team itself, but, um, the upcoming staff training by Dr. Holly and, and others, if, if there are. All this should come to the board approval before it goes any further. And not to stop diversity, equity, and inclusion from being properly put into the district, but that is to give transparency to this process that what we received, uh, last week, enough evidence to, to do that. Our discussion yesterday in, in the, in the workshop prior last week was that the equity team met nine meetings or, or last year to come to the point of changing our equity belief statement, our equity embrace statement, think avid, and to revise our social justice statement. From the 79-slide presentation of the past year, much more extensive. Statement and the vision statement, which board has policies to communicate what our mission is. Policy 2105. Board has policy 2110, which is a statement of our philosophy. Policies that the board has passed are not communicated in what was put on the website. I assume, only can assume what was planned to be put in the mission and the vision statement change our look, if you will, as a school district, online, anyway. Wrong, but I feel that this usurped the power of the board. I have a lot of examples in front of me from this slide presentation alone that, sure, that all of critical race theory is not only being implemented in this school district, but has been implemented in this school district. And I want to say to the community, I am, uh, the reason I brought this to the board's attention is not because I am a person that does not believe in diversity, equity, or inclusion. We are a diverse community. We do put resources where they're needed and we should on those students that need more resources. And yes, we include-- if, if this board is to go forward with this plan that is currently in place, it's drawing a division on the line of race. And my fear as a board member to bring this to the attention of the community and to be the one saying what I'm saying, um, is that if we bring race into our school, which is causing a division, I, I'm not saying racism doesn't exist. I'm not saying we don't need to understand it from all perspectives. We certainly do. I am 100% for that. But if we are going to use teachings that have kids as young as four and five years old, look through the lens of race, then we will divide the community until the community starts to leave the school district. And if those people that can take their children out of the school district and put them somewhere else, and if the school district shrinks more, which it is shrinking every year, I hear, um, that does not serve marginal children in this community. That does not serve the poorest families who need education and deserve an education, which we are mandated to provide them, being a public education institution. This divisive wedge that has crept in, and I'm not saying that it was done, um, with malice, I'm just saying we have an absolute responsibility and accountability to, as the board, take this upon ourselves and fix it. And, um, there are statements in, in this slide presentation that talk about dismantling racism. They talk about turning students from an advocacy into an activism. There's a resistant plan for teachers who don't believe in the work of equity. There are things in here that I was shocked by when I saw them. And so I feel it is-- it is put upon this board to not allow things that would divide our school district or community to go forward until we have a chance to put them in proper order. And I mean that not as one individual, but as an entire board. All those people that are on the committee, all those people in the community, um, that would be my very strong recommendation. I think what's happened here is we have a committee that has board representation on it. For nine months, it's, it met. We don't know what's going on in, in, in it until a couple of weeks ago. can't push this down the road till August or September. We, we have to start to deal with it sooner. I'm, um, I'm not recommending that the people that worked hard on this-- I'm not recommending that the people that worked hard on this, this would necessarily be over. I've heard a lot of good things in comments and from emails and from teachers in the district that have different perspectives, very different perspectives than I understand or understood. And there's real changes that need to occur. I think some of that's been done. A lot of that's good. A lot of it's good. But we're kidding ourselves if we go forward here and don't address comment, but.
So I, 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 I do believe what we have heard at our TNL meeting, and I'm not going to speak on the behalf of our administration, but I, what I had heard at our committee meeting yesterday is our administration, yes, has kind of pumped the brakes here. And we're going to be bringing things through TNL during our workshop, Teaching Learning Committee, during our workshop. One of the things that I was trying to say to give some perspective is that there are many aspects and many topics that administration takes on, and they have committees that help them with that. And what happens is, is that information trickles up to the board level. And perhaps, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Mr. Zenobia, but maybe I should just say my analysis was maybe of this is maybe that didn't trickle up fast enough. And we need to, we, we need to address these things. And I guess I will see if administration wants to comment on what their perspective of this is right now and what they're committed to.
Well, I can certainly try to take a shot at that. So Mr. Beekman was the leader of the Delt committee. Ms. Landish and I supported him the same way that we will support Mrs. Rogers in leading the district equity leadership team. We began the committee in September. We met monthly. And it was in the spring that we talked about doing a board workshop. It was at that time, it was in March that we decided we may as well wait until the election happens and we have a new board seated, if that was the potential that may occur. And so we got to that point in the summer, subsequently at the same time that Mr. Zenobia had requested it. So Ms. Landish, anything you wanted to, to add to that?
I guess I just, I'll, I'll affirm that and also add that even though the information didn't come to like a formal board setting, that there were avenues for board communication, either through the connect blogs that we have and/or Friday board packets. Again, that wouldn't be something that the public would hear, but there were board, you know, Friday updates given in terms of progress as well. So I don't know what other question you have, Mr. Como?
No, I'm just, I'm just allowing administration a chance to, 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 to comment on this. I know that this administration is committed to transparency. I've witnessed it. I have been on this board long enough to have witnessed things that weren't transparent. That's pretty ugly. And so we place our trust in administration as a board to be bringing things to our level that we need to know about. And I, I think that maybe we got a little bit ahead of the curve on some things here. We pumped the brakes. We took some of those things off the website. I think that as we move forward, we just need to be extremely clear on what our agenda is, where we're headed. And that's going back to what my earlier statement is, is this is not an event. There's many facets to this topic, and we will be covering it on a regular basis. Yes?
I would like to add one more thing to Mr. Zenobia's comment, just to clarify. So our actual mission and vision statement, Mr. Zenobia, that you do reference, you know, our values that are outside the boardroom posted, there is no change or intent to change anything in that mission or vision statement. So the belief and embrace statement that I read last night was so that the district could have a common definition around equity and what our belief statement was for all kids to be successful. So that, there was no intent for that to be intertwined with our current mission or vision.
Ms. Reincheck?
When the statements were changed on our website, how did that come about?
Will you turn, or at least bring it a little closer, Karen? I'm sorry. I'm getting a wave.
How did the, the, the statements change on the website? Did someone say, here's our new statements, and then they're typed up and it's all okay if it didn't go through the board? How did someone have that avenue to be able to do that?
Sure, I can, I can explain that to you. So basically, our equity page, I'm pretty sure we didn't have like an equity dropdown before we had our Director of Equity and Educator Development, that position that we established two years ago. Now, just historically speaking, we've had that Director of Educator Development position for years, but we tacked on to that a focus around equity as well in terms of job responsibilities. So in this case, Mr. Beekman, who was in his first and second year with that, built a link on our website around just globally, the, the work we were doing around equity in the system. So that's why, over the past two years, you've seen the additions of, you know, our Avid, our Duolanguage, our Black Student Union, and then in this case, the belief and embrace statement. But very recently, at the board work session last week, it, it was requested from the board that we remove that from our website. And so that's what we did since our board work session.
Questions or comments? Oh, Ms. Roddy.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, some, I don't have that peripheral vision as good out of this.
That's all right. I have a question for maybe administration. Does the board approve other teams or administrative committees at all? That administration can select and move forward?
That's, it's, it's an administrative committee, and they form their own committees.
I have a follow-up.
And just, and just to, and just to take, just maybe to expand on that a little bit. At the, at the highest level, the board sets policy, and administration interprets that policy and implements that policy. And as they do their implementation of that, they are free to form groups in, in teams in order to work together to run this district. It's just the way any organization works. You have teams. So there is no policy that really we, that where we would dictate who's on, on those teams. It's up to them to interpret, administration to interpret our policies and to implement them. And if we don't like what's happening there, we evaluate this, this person sitting right next to me. We talk about what the issues are. We hold our superintendent accountable. And that's kind of how the process works. Ms. Landish?
Just like to add to that, that in my leadership experience here, we actually try not to use the word committee with these types of structures. We try to use, again, like councils or teams and things like that, so that people do not confuse the board committee structure with other administrative teams.
Thank you for that. May I ask a follow-up question to you?
Oh, sure.
Mr. Zenobia, you had mentioned that you weren't opposed to diversity, equity, inclusion, which is good to hear. And I, and I knew that you had, we'd had, we'd heard that. But you mentioned that diversity, equity, and inclusion to be properly put into the district based off of your communications with either staff, administration, families. What does that look like to you? Or what are you hoping to, to see properly put into the district?
Elements of what I've seen here, elements in Delt team, there's elements there that I think have been implemented. There's good elements there. My purpose in bringing this up is tell teachers how to teach, oh, that. Bringing this up is not teaching kids how to critically think. That's proven in what I've seen on this level of what I would call political indoctrination. Not the purview of anyone in education at this level, K to 12. To be someone that is indoctrinating politically, it's, that's very difficult when they themselves are being indoctrinated into beliefs. Mr., you know, Dr. Holly, I may ask you a question and a point that you brought up. You pointed out that this is an administrative committee. It is, from what I can tell, except you are on the committee. You have been since its inception. Ordered anything to the board? Why?
I was asked to be part of the committee. As you and I both stated, it's an administrative committee. So the administration reported out, they reported out to the board in our weekly updates and, excuse me, doctor, Ms. Landish's blog that she has. That's how the information was shared with the board. Now, a lot of that may have come out prior to your election, so you may not have seen those and not be aware that that information had come out. So that's how the information was shared with the board.
It was a, I'm sorry, it was a blog that was, I don't know.
Yes, blog and then our Friday packets.
I, I do have a question for administration. I want to say that the things that I requested from administration and the conversations I've had with all of you have been great. You've been forthcoming about this. It's, it's actually a little unfair that Ms. Landish has had to jump in and present materials that were in the hands of the former Equity Director who had two, two opportunities to present to the board in June and July and did not. I'm sorry, in June, and did not. So I think it's a little unfair, but administration has been very transparent. I'm, I'm not, now that we have information, this isn't just a, you know, how do we educate teachers a little bit to teach better? This is a full-on reordering of the district's goals and priorities, mission and vision, even though that hasn't been changed. It is here in the presentation. So this team has had a lot more influence than, I suppose, I, I think is what I'm hearing tonight. A lot of influence. Part of the mission of the team was to, once they've gone through the training, was to take that training to other groups, staff meetings and sale teams. That's in the presentation. So not, not just a one-off of brainstorming.
Mr. Dietz?
Ms. Landish, correct me if I'm wrong, but last night I heard you say that any member of the committee, I think it was a representation of each school in the district, their mission was not to take back information from the committee and to share it with their particular staff at like a staff meeting or anything like that. That was like pretty clear to, I think, every single member on that committee. Is that correct?
Right. So in year one, which we just completed, that was the case. We did our learning as a team, and there was no intent in year one to bring forth any information. Mr. Zenobia, what you might be referring to is that in year two and in subsequent years, we did talk about how can that look and that they would bring it back, whatever it is. We don't even have any agendas set for, for next year yet with Tiara Rogers, Mrs. Rogers coming in in the transition. We just are planning the dates, looking at, at the membership of the team and starting that work this summer to, as to what that might look like for year two.
And Ms. Landish, am I correct that the mission and vision statement of this district hasn't changed for at least 10 years?
Over 15 years.
And then just a question for Mr. Zenobia. The slide presentation that you're referring to, can you refresh my memory on where that was shared with us?
It was per my request. It came in an email with, I requested four things. The, the slide presentation that Mr. Beekman had promised me.
Okay, yep.
Whatever, all the things.
Okay.
That was all provided.
So that was part of the committee, that slide presentation?
Higher. All nine committees.
All nine meetings of the committee?
Yep.
Okay. Or of the team, I guess it's called?
Yes.
Whatever. Okay. Yep. Okay. I do recall that then. Yeah, thank you.
So if I'm sitting in the audience, I'm wondering, where's this going? Okay, this is, is my interpretation of, of where's this going? And feel free to join in here. I've heard that administration is committed to bringing forth these key concepts, whether they be definitions, whatever various aspects that we've talked about tonight. The primary committee that, that that's going to come to at the board level is teaching and learning. I heard that we're going to be transparent. I believe we need to add clarity there. Our constituents deserve clarity. I think we need to take a balanced approach on this as we move forward. There's a spectrum this wide of opinions as to what we should do and what is the best. We need to have full debate on that and narrow that down to what we believe as a board is best for this district to move forward. That's what I think we owe our community. That's what I have heard over the last week, whether it was in our workshop at the Teaching Learning Committee meeting last night and here tonight. I don't know if we can do anything more than that right now. So we, I think we need to continue to hear on each of the various topics that will be taken up as we have this discussion and as we move forward and figure out how to best implement this moving forward. Is that, is that fair? I mean, that's kind of where my head is at. I've been involved with all three of these meetings over this last, last week. That's my opinion as to where we're going. I believe that's what we owe to our constituents. Comments on that? Mr. Dietz?
Mr. Como, it's my understanding too that what we've been discussing over the last few minutes here is something that will be a continued item that will be on the agenda for teaching and learning. It's not something that, you know, we're not going to be, you know, pushing aside or whatever, but it'll be continuing. whatever, but it'll be continuing to move forward.
I think, I think we're going to need to break it up into chunks.
Yeah.
It's just too big of an item.
Exactly.
But I think it needs to be front and center.
Right.
I think our constituents are demanding that.
Sure.
I think we owe it to our parents and our students, to be clear too, and what's, what's going on. We need to do a good job on this.
I agree.
And we will.
I agree.
I believe we're committed to that. We need to be committed to this. We have to bring this community together. This is too polarizing of a topic to just let sit and have it sputter and have people have various opinions, whether they're based on fact or not. We need to get the facts in front of us. We need to understand as a board what we're dealing with. And yes, we set the policy and we set the direction. It belongs here. It is ours. The implementation of it is administration's. We're going to continue to operate as we always have. Ms. Reincheck?
So what are we going to do about the staff development?
I guess we would need to have that agendized for an action item at some point in time, soon. So perhaps what I think we might want to do is put that on the TNL agenda for our August 3 meeting. Ms. Reincheck?
What is the date of staff development again?
I think August 28-ish, 25.
August 23rd and 24th.
Oh, okay.
Would we be able to have a backup presenter? Should this presenter not?
Good, good question.
I have an opinion on that, but it's strictly my opinion. I have not collaborated with anybody in this statement. So my opinion would be that we would not be able to secure somebody in that short of time. We cancel the contract, the money is spent and we lose, we lose the money and lose the speaker. But again, the information that we are trying to build our teacher toolkit with is around validate, affirm, build and bridge. And I believe that, you know, we would just use internal expertise at that point to fill gaps in learning. That's just my opinion, just off the cuff.
Anything more, Ms. Reincheck? Dr. Piesak?
To follow up on that, so this, the determination that we were going to have the training was not a decision made by the board. So why would need to be brought to the board to not have the training? Can't the administration make that decision?
That's, that's, that's a very good question. I think given the light of the situation, maybe it does need to come to the board. The board can choose to allow administration to continue to make that decision. It really is an operational decision, in my opinion. I believe it belongs there, but I don't mind having it come to TNL and having us debate it. Because I, just given the situation, does that make sense? Yes?
If I could, I would agree that these are operational decisions. I think the problem is that the policy and the strategy was not, I think, not appropriately vetted at the board level in the beginning. So now we've gotten to a point where we're kind of in the 11th hour and maybe money is spent. I appreciate your comments that we should take a balanced approach and slow down. If we're going to pump the brakes, I just can't understand why we would bring in a controversial consultant to deliver mandatory training to our staff. And I don't know that, that that requires a board decision. That's.
Well, at this stage of the game, I agree with you. At this stage of the game, administration hasn't changed that or hasn't brought it back. It is an item that our constituents have brought to us. And I would agree that it is an administrative decision, but I think we ought to be, you know, we, I'm willing to debate that at the board level. Administration could decide tomorrow, next week to maybe pull that speaker. Maybe we wouldn't have to have that discussion. Maybe that discussion still would need to happen just so that we can kind of get our hands wrapped around this. I personally think it should belong in administration's hands. But I think we're in some interesting times. And so I'd like to leave it in administration's hands. I'd be all ears on comments on whether it should. Mr. Dietz?
I think it belongs there. However, if there is no action on that by our August 3 meeting, I think, you know, obviously we'd be looking at agendizing that and discussing it.
Other thoughts, Mrs. Reincheck?
Can we agendize it and then scratch it if something should happen, but it's on there just in case?
Yes, both, both approaches could, could, could take place, yes. I think, I think the reason why I would even consider this to be a board item is the controversy, the controversy that is around the topic. So how, how do we, how do we address that? I would expect some, that there might be some board members, maybe even myself, saying at the time, this doesn't belong on the TNL committee. We shouldn't be discussing it. I'm just offering it to show that we're going, we are transparent about this. Do we want to change our processes? Is this a gray area where we want to change our processes? Mr. Dietz?
Ms. Landish, typically when district speakers present to all staff, does the district give them parameters? Does the district have a copy of their speech prior to? Could you just expand on your experience with that for me, please?
Yes, to both of the questions. So yes, we collaborate with the national speakers. They always like to tailor and customize for, you know, the school district needs. So yes, that happens. This isn't any different from any other speaker that we've had. As Mr. Zenobia knows, one of the requests was for a sort of a lesson plan in layman's terms, right, or a transcript of what the training will hold, but they, that office is closed until July 14th. So Mrs. Rogers has a meeting with them on July 14th so that we can secure some type of lesson plan so the board can see that as well.
So just to put this thing to context, we've never approved any speaker that came to any of the trainings, just so you have an understanding of that. And that's to Dr. Piesak's question and point is, have we ever done this before? We haven't. But we also have not had a situation like this. We just haven't. Mr. McCaffrey?
The question I have is, is the concern the speaker or the strategies? And can they be separated? Well, can they be separated? Can we?
Can the person and the strategy be separated? Absolutely.
And then is the concern the speaker or the strategies? Mr. Zenobia? Or both? I'm just, I'm wondering, because I hear, you know, we're talking about the speaker and then we're talking about the strategies and it seems like they're not intertwined. So both. The concern is the strategies regardless about who's speaking?
Both, both. In relation to the speaker, both are a concern. And again, to Ms. Landish's point about the VA bridge, though that those strategies aren't fine, but context of the speaker, I'll put it in the question. Yes?
Well, the only reason I ask is because we talked about getting rid of the speaker and Mrs. Landish said that she'd be hard pressed to find a speaker to replace him. But if it's the strategies, do we want to replace the speaker? I mean, when it comes down to it, maybe it's the strategies, doesn't matter who speaks about them. I mean, I'm just trying to get at the core, you know, what the thought process is here. Because if it's the strategies and it doesn't matter who's speaking about them, that's, that's, that's a bigger issue.
All I can say to that is, from what I've seen of Mr. Hawley, I don't know that you can separate the two. I'm not calling into question that the strategies that are attempting to be implemented, but are not a good intent by the administration to do that, I think, at this moment, yes. So far as how to bring this thing, I, I'm going to put this back into TNL if that's the only place we can put it down. Probably has to go there if administration, I want to make a change before that.
Well, yeah, I would agree. If it needs to go to TNL, it needs to go to TNL. But my concern would be if we're going to discuss just the speaker, not the strategies.
So is your question that, of getting another presenter to present the strategies?
No, my, my question would be whether getting a new presenter would actually alleviate the issue that we're having?
Not entirely, no.
So the question is not, is the PD? That's what's in question, the PD. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Because Mr. Como was talking about how we never approved a speaker, but the issue is not the speaker, the issue is the strategies and, and the way they're being presented to the district, regardless who's speaking. I mean, I want to know, because when we, when we discuss this stuff, I want to know what the issue is. And, you know, we're separating the speaker, because some people are talking about the speaker over here and some people are talking about the strategies. So I want to know what, you know, what, what the issue is. Because there's, I mean, there are certain things that, that are, you know, professional development educationally that are just those things.
Right.
And you can have any speaker you want, but this is the way it's taught, or this is the way, you know, the strategies are committed. So it doesn't matter who's speaking about them. So I'm just asking you if it's the strategies, it's the actual professional development that is the concern, your concern? And that's it? Doesn't matter who's, doesn't matter who's presenting the strategies?
If I could maybe clarify, the speaker came out of the Del, right? So those are the strategies that were put in place. This was a speaker that was selected. Jody, just, we want to have a clarification.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I didn't know if I was supposed to answer that or not. The, the speaker did not come out of the district Equity Leadership Team. The speaker has been with us for two years and that was one of the outcomes of the discipline team that Dr. Cook referenced in the work. That was that 62-member team, I think.
Yep, yep. But included superintendent at the time to address the disparities that we were seeing in our system. And just to take that back a little further, I mean, that's a continuation of work that we did between 2008 and 2012 with Singleton around race and equity in our system. So it's been ongoing for 13, 14, 15 years now. Dr. Hawley has been part of the program for two as a byproduct of that, what we found in our, in our behavior work in the system.
So if I may, from our discussion in the TNL committee yesterday, went over the restorative justice portion that he talked about and it was a disciplinary area that Hawley, and you said you saw results there, if I recall correctly. That was part of what he's done in the past. May clarify that what I'm saying, what I said about the Del team, because of what is here, the strategies that are being talked about here, Hawley was used to train on those things. So to your point, I don't think you can separate for this discussion, these two things. If we're going to, one, we would have to agendize the other. Not to say that Dr. Hawley has nothing to offer educators in training, not trying to make that point. So.
I was just going to offer a clarification because I have watched a lot of the materials and read a lot of the materials, also the materials within the district, that you, I believe that you cannot separate the VAB curriculum or development from Shiroki Hawley. They are one and the same because that's his program. So if we've, is, am I correct, Ms. Landish? That's his program, right, VAB? So it isn't just a question of the speaker, it's a question of the whole package because we won't get that training from somebody else. And I think that's where this just goes all the way back to, if we don't have a clear plan and strategy that's vetted and at the level of, you know, call it board policy on how we want to approach this with the, the input and guidance from whatever committees are necessary, but balanced committees, then I think it's, it's difficult to say, you know, continue while we put the brakes on and think about how we want to do this. Because running into this in five or six weeks as a mandatory exercise for our staff, I think, is a problem. Because we don't, we haven't, we don't know where we're starting from.
And that, and that would be the purpose of agendizing it for TNL, to have that discussion. You know, I don't know what that discussion would look like.
But the point being, you can't just replace the speaker.
Right, yep, yep.
So I'm, I'm trying to be considerate for administration and the plans for the professional development in August, that this isn't something that drags out until the second week of August, board meeting.
Mr. Dietz, did you have your hand up before?
No, I'm good.
I saw a twitch.
I did.
Okay.
Well, I guess, I guess I do have a follow-up.
It was an accurate observation I had, right?
That was. Dr. Cook, could you tell me a little bit about why we're, as a district, fully, fully addressing this committee? We've been cited by the Department of Public Instruction, right? For some of our?
Yeah, we've been found to be disproportionate in our identification of black students in special education for years, which means that we are not using the pre-referral strategies to try to address a kid's needs in our system. I mean, it's, it's leading right to special education. And from the federal government through IDEA, through the state with their designations, we have been disproportionate and significantly disproportionate, I think, for 11 out of the last 12 years. And I think that that precipitated a lot of the committee work that happened over a decade ago, was to how are we going to reach particularly our black students in our system so that we can better the outcomes for them?
And what happens if we don't follow the directive from the Department of Public Instruction?
It has IDEA flow-through grant budgetary implications. We have to submit a plan to them on how we are going to address our disproportionality in our system.
Right. And what kind of dollars are we talking about?
The total grant is about $3 million and the CEIS funds, the Early Intervening Service Funds are somewhere between $400 and $425,000 now that we've hit that 15% mark.
Has the plan already been submitted?
We haven't even gotten the budget allocation for '21, '22. And the DPI hasn't fully closed out the 2021 grant process. So the last budget that we submitted and have finalized was the So the last budget that we submitted and have finalized was the 1920 school year.
So even though you don't have the funds, you're still expected by the Department of Public Instruction to have something in place to start with corrective action?
Correct. It's just a matter of when the DPI is going to implement that. We have to, as a criteria to get those budgeted monies, we have to submit our plan to address discrepancies in our system.
And I'm in no way advocating for the speaker. I'm nowhere, I'm not advocating for the strategies being taught. I'm just making sure everyone knows the history of how we ended up here.
Sure.
Thank you.
And if we, and just to be clear, if we don't follow through on some of the things, we will lose that $3 million. We will have to figure out how to make that up. And our structural deficit is close to that amount, and you would double that. That would really put a huge wrench in the whole budgetary process. Ms. Roddy, I think you were. I'm sorry. Did you have comment on what I just made, Jody? Or not?
I just have a comment, if I could, just in general. Thank you, Mr. Como. As we are processing, because I don't know where the board is heading with this yet regarding speaker strategy, so I appreciate you bringing that up, Mr. McCaffrey. I just wanted to make mention, again, I will put this, what we're calling an adult learning framework, I will put this in your board packet on Friday so you can see it. Having an adult learning framework is part of our sale process. And basically, what it describes for adults in your organization is what we expect. So we have adult learning frameworks around literacy, around WICOR, which is Avid-related, around gradual release, and then around, you know, staff beliefs. One B, as related to demonstrating knowledge of students, and this is right on here, so you'll be able to see it, is built into part of our teachers' evaluation system. Part of the indicators of success for teacher practice in terms of educator effectiveness talk about cultural heritage and actively, having teachers actively seeking out the background of culture, skills, language proficiency, and special needs. Like, that is pulled right out from the teacher evaluation. So as we plan, and Mr. Como has mentioned, as we plan over the years how we're building this knowledge and expertise in our teachers, this is just one strand of what we're trying to build, again, to complement their toolkit. So you'll see the indicators of which we're trying to strive for. Every single school in our system, in essence, the plan was to be working towards these success criteria. So I need you, I guess, to have a global picture of that. You know, really, if the board decides whatever, wherever you're going with it, I just wanted you to have that information about just overall professional development. That's how we have normally made our decisions around that.
And educator effectiveness is a statewide teacher evaluation system. It's not the School District of Rockshaws.
Correct, correct.
Ms. Roddy? Were you still, did you have other? Okay. Mr. Zenobia?
I did have a follow-up to Dr. Cook. After what Mr. Dietz brought up as far as having a plan in place and not to lose the funding, what you're saying is, the plan could be modified from where we are now, and we could still comply and still receive the funding not been set yet. So we have time, if we were to choose, to potentially modify what is currently being done and not lose the funds that are coming. I don't advocate for that at all. So is that fair to say?
Yeah, we have the latitude to put in that plan, what we need, particularly for '21, '22, and beyond. It does have to address racial disproportionality in special education. So the body of literature out there on how to do that is how to make connections with homes, how to understand and embrace cultural differences, how to develop relationships in the class. So those are the strategies that we are looking to develop our staff in. And then also, when we start to provide targeted interventions to kids, to bring people into work on specific skills with specific students. So that's generally what it needs to be. Our plan has encompassed interventionists, deans of students, our director of equity position, professional development, materials, opportunities for people, so that we can begin to meet that need. I mean, the consistent thing across the last, say, 12 years is we are not meeting the needs of black students in general in our system. And so it's our responsibility then to come up with a plan to do that. Whether that involves Dr. Hawley, whether that involves Singleton, whether that involves somebody else. The topics that are being discussed are topics that have been around here for a long time, and we've been working towards them for a long time.
Thank you. All right.
Go ahead.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Is it just black students that were, are the Hispanic students we are achieving?
This is the designation. So this is the targeted designation. It has generally been black students in EBD, SLD, OHI, intellectual disability. That has been the group for the special ed designation. If you were to look at overall achievement gap issues that exist across our system, you would see that low SES status, you would see that in special education, students with disabilities, you would see that in language proficiency. So that exists more broadly. This particular topic, though, has been specific to the designation that we get as being disproportionate or significantly disproportionate.
And this PD, the culturally relevant teaching strategies, is an acceptable professional development to address that in a special ed?
Yeah, there's, at a universal level, I mean, a student who has special education needs doesn't cease to be a general education student.
Right.
And so if you go back 25 years, we've been making the effort for inclusive education for students with disabilities. And within that, you have that, you have the co-designations for students. Be a student with a disability who's white, be a student with a disability who's black, you could be a student with a disability who's Latino. And you may also have free and reduced lunch status. And so as we begin to, you know, deal with the layers of this, you know, we've done a good job of developing our staff around inclusive practices for kids with disabilities. We have done a good job of building supports in our system for English learners through our dual-language program and such. The one area that we haven't met the need of is around our black students. And that's hence the area in the targeted professional development, the adult learning framework that you see. We know that we need to make gains there.
And the only question, another question I have is, have we ever approved at a board level PD?
Not that I'm aware of.
I mean, the speaker, I mean, outside of the speaker, I mean, just the PD in general, have we ever?
Not that I remember.
Remember, I mean.
I don't want to be the local historian, but I don't recall it.
We didn't approve, didn't that come from a board? We just got reports on it at TNL, okay. And that's PD essentially for, right, okay.
Ms. Roddy?
Yes, thank you. I guess just my, one of my final thoughts for this conversation and sort of a follow-up to Mr. Zenobia's question of me and my part in the Delt team. I don't exactly know. I have an assumption as to why I might have been selected to be the board representative. My assumption is that I am a female, and I am, I'm Hispanic. That would have given me some authority to, I guess, relate to maybe what some of our students were. That's an assumption. I've not, I guess, straight out asked why I was part of that team. But my thoughts and my interpretation of the purpose of the Delt team and why I wanted to be a part of it was to bring about conversations, bring them forward, to ask questions about what would be best for every student in every subgroup. My vision for it was to create a set of questions, maybe checkpoints, similar to what the Rotary has. I don't know if you're familiar with the Rotary's four-way test. They have four questions. The first is, is it truth? Is it fair to all concern? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Will it be beneficial to all concern? Please don't tell my Rotarians that I had to read it. I didn't want to mess it up. That was my personal vision for the purpose of the Delt team. I wanted something that was a checklist that eventually turned into part of our district culture to bring about these conversations regarding decisions and programming. Now, I guess this is just a general statement. Now, I, as a member of the Hispanic community, I believe, I am, I have been fearfully and wonderfully made and created by my God. I do not want my color, my heritage neutralized. And I wouldn't imagine that others in our community would want that for themselves. I hear the constituents and families when they say that things are being said and shared in the classroom that have their children come home, and they're just so upset because they were told that they should feel guilty for who they are and that they're racist. I get that. I understand that. I feel the same when I hear children in the Hispanic community classified as disadvantaged or marginalized. Who's to tell them that they, their level of being disadvantaged or whatever is in the eye of the beholder? I don't like them being told, I don't like hearing that. So I understand when the community is sharing those things with us with regards to their children. My goal, my hope to see the future of this Delt team to continue is that we, as a school district, would recognize and celebrate the diversity within our community and our district, diversity that our businesses pay a pretty penny for to have as part of their teams. But I want the differences validated. You don't have to, you know, there's more to my culture than food and music. There's more to us. And I want each of the communities recognized. I want full history taught, just as everybody else is, the good, the bad, the ugly, without making anybody present who wasn't part of that past to feel guilty about that. And space for the children and the staff to have these critical conversations. That's what I would like to see with the Delt team. Some of the pieces that you saw and on that PowerPoint, the PowerPoint was used as minutes, so to speak. So just because stuff is on there didn't mean, it was discussed and either said, nope, not now. And the statements that came out were what came out. So that's what I can speak to, my part, my goal for the Delt team.
Mr. Zenobia?
Thank you. Ms. Roddy, I appreciate everything you said. And I think you are probably the perfect choice for the committee, for the team. Mainly for the reasons you just stated. My only question was, why hadn't you reported on it prior? Which I didn't know about there being a blog, I guess. That's what I was getting at. I, you know, one thing that, to your point, you have to understand, this is coming from my perspective. We have to understand each other. We all have a different voice, we all come from different places. We had a speaker that mentioned that as well. It would be tragic for us to gloss that over and not understand that we, as a community, as a school district, have that level of diversity and need to hear from all voices. I 100% agree with that, I really do. That is very important. I will tell you that I have noticed that I am a peculiar creature as well coming into this school board, because I'm obviously someone who thinks very diversely from a lot of other people. And I would like to see more diversity of thought, of all thoughts. And I think we've talked about balance many times. And we've talked about modifying, expanding the team itself. We have so many diverse perspectives, there's room for more perspectives on the team going forward, I would think, if the team is to go forward. Talked about critical thinking, I think that's central to education. Critical thinking requires some balance or at least two perspectives, maybe opposite perspectives on topics. So those are the kinds of things that I'm driving at, at trying to bring up some issues that I see. That's fair.
All right. I, I think we've had a robust discussion on this. I appreciate the respect that was carried on with this discussion. I also appreciate the comments that each of our citizens made tonight in respectful manners. This is a very intense topic. And it is something we have to address and we will address. So I appreciate everyone's contribution here. Again, this is not an event, this is a process. There is many facets to this. We touched on budgetary implications, we touched on training implications, we touched on teaching implications, we touched on many aspects. I'm not even probably listing them all right now. But I appreciate the discussion, and we will continue to move forward on this. Mr. Dietz? You have another topic to move to?
The third discussion information item was a boardroom technology update. As requested by myself, Steve Schloman, our chief information officer for technology, was at the meeting to outline the upgrades planned for the boardroom. These upgrades include a boardroom audio system, added wireless microphones, a permanent WebEx room kit, and real-time video feeds for overflow rooms 109 and 213.
Any questions or comments on this? Okay, Craig?
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my Teaching and Learning Committee report for this evening. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 3, 2021, at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Moving on to the Government Relations Committee, given by Ms. Reincheck.
Mr. President, I do not have anything to report tonight and next month.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Human Resources and Compensation Committee, given by Ms. Roddy.
Thank you. The Human Resources and Compensation Committee met this evening prior to the board meeting. The approval, we had one action item, excuse me. The approval of the recommended candidate and the contract for the position of principal of East Alternative School. The administration is recommending Susan Poppy for the position of principal of East Alternative School. Ms. Susan Poppy is a passionate educator and leader that is driven by serving all students. Her extensive experience in special education is an asset as she brings, as she begins her work with both our students in Alternative School and our Transition Academy. Ms. Poppy is currently the Director of Fox River Consortium, which is an alternative school that serves two districts. Prior, she was a special education teacher with Kenosha Unified School District. She received her Bachelor's of Science in Special Education at UW-Whitewater. She went on to get her Master's in Science in Curriculum and Instruction through National, excuse me, through National Lewis University, and completed her Principal and Director of Instruction Certification Program at Carrow University. Susan's resume and contract were provided in your packet. Salary and benefits will be according to the middle management policies. Mr. President, I move the approval of the recommendation and contract of Ms. Susan Poppy for the position of principal of East Alternative School.
Is there a second to that? Given by Mr. Dietz? Discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reincheck?
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes 7-0, Sue? Amanda?
We have no further information or discussion items this evening. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to other business, are there any recommendations for future board or committee discussion or action items? Mr. Zenobia?
Really more just a follow-up of tonight, one element that we didn't look at, we discussed the IDEA funds. Do get it by the next board meeting, if we could talk about it then.
Clarification of the $420,000 or $25,000 fund, that's the breakdown that you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Como, if I may, just to provide a timeline on that, we heard from the DPI that those funds will be allocated to us on the 15th of July, and at that point, we should know then where the 2021 books kind of settled out under that grant. So I'll be able to provide you an update after that, as to where we've been at the last few years around that CCIS grant.
And I think part of that was, and Dr. Cook gave us, in an answer to my question earlier, gave a list of areas that resources and funds are already going within the equity program, could possibly be reviewed at that time, or something that myself, the board, could look at to review as part of that discussion, if that's possible.
Makes sense? Right? Anything else? Okay, thank you, everyone. We do not have a need for closed session, so this meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.